We ready, Lynda? At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for the purpose of agenda review for next week's business session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer?
He's out of the room.
Out of the room. Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Klucka?
Out of the room.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Chairman Ilert?
Here. We do have a quorum present. Would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda item?
Number one, consider approving the April 12, 2018 business session minutes.
Okay, it will stay on consent. Item number two.
Consider acceptance of the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and approve the reclassification of reserves in the amount of $99,000 and authorize the Mental Health Center to add one FTE for a case manager position to provide homeless outreach services.
Mr. Fortin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tanner Fortin, Mental Health. This is a request to add a position and accept a grant, which is known as the ESG grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant. Mental Health has already been awarded this grant from the Human Services Department. And what this will allow us to do is, at present, we do provide to the homeless population in Johnson County a certain level of what we call "street-level outreach." We do have some case management staff that do try to reach out to them, given what resources we have available. However, that is really very lacking. We try to get them into, whether they need food pantry access, where they need medical attention, mental health, you name it. We try our best to get them in, but we just don't really have a lot of resources to do it, nor do we have a full-time position dedicated. However, through this particular grant that's been awarded to us, this will allow us to hire a full-time case manager that can be dedicated solely to this particular type of service. Now, this position, as mentioned, is, the grant is only for a period of just over a year. We do, however, have additional ESG grants that we receive, and part of our hope is, is that if this is successful, and we are very confident that it will be, given some of the metrics we use to track it, we feel that once this particular grant ends, we'll have a very, very good opportunity and a good shot at receiving some additional ESG grant funds that could continue this position on a, perhaps, a permanent basis. If not, however, this position, if there's no other grant funding available and no other funding that we have at Mental Health, then that position, after a period of a year, would be eliminated. We don't think that's going to happen, but that would be something, of course, we would identify a successful candidate coming into the position, so they were aware. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Question? Mr. Allen.
Yes, Tanner, thanks for finding this. I know recently there was an article in the paper, kind of a criticism that the county didn't have homeless shelters, and I did get a few calls and emails on that. And I told them my personal preference was for programs to help them and get them directed to the services they need, that they're not homeless. I said, "My concern would be," frankly, I think there's 1,000 homeless people in shelters in Jackson County. I said, "We could build one with 500 people that'd probably be immediately full." And to me, a better approach is to have programs to address and help them not be homeless. So these are the type of programs that can help address that issue, and I do appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Osterhaus, do you have a question?
Tanner, well, this position, Commissioner Allen kind of brought it up, but Commissioner Brown and I sit in the workforce development, and we were, I was wondering if you knew what the coordination would be with the workforce development and job placement, that kind of thing, for, with this position, or is that too early to say?
That's a good question. I really don't have an answer for that to you. Our clinical staff do work with them quite frequently on various things. But yes, that is something I think that we can definitely take a look at. Let me do a little checking on that, and I can get you some more information if you'd like.
Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, pivoting off of what Commissioner Allen just said, I'll direct this question to Mr. Thompson. This issue has gotten some publicity, and you and I had conversations related to some efforts in Olatha in particular, related to homelessness and poverty. I was just wondering, have you begun to formulate a kind of a strategic approach to how the county can be supportive of these efforts to address the issue? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I believe in it.
Okay.
For the question, Commissioner Tanner, and I appreciate that word, "begun."
Right.
Because that's where I'm at in the process. I'd start by reminding this body that this is one of your strategic priorities, the one around vulnerable populations. This year, we inserted the words "those who are housing insecure." So I see this as consistent with maybe the county's role in helping do some of that. I have now convened, in partnership with United Community Services, two large gatherings of government, nonprofit, and a bit of the business community to begin to talk about how we collectively begin to address this identified community problem. So again, just two meetings. After two meetings, though, I'm pleased to report we are developing a plan. It's in its infancy, but some concrete steps for action are being developed. You referenced workforce partnership. We have had discussions about workforce partnership being one of those entities we need to entice to the table, along with a larger business presence as well, so we'll be working on that. But in regards to this particular population, I stopped short of saying correlation, I don't know if that's the right word, but as we know, there is a strong linkage between mental health and the homeless population. So I have no doubt that this position will not be critical in helping address some of those needs. Last comment I would make, I haven't looked directly at the amount of flexibility we'll have with this position, but it may be able to be used in a way that kind of ties into that strategic plan as well. So again, not solely focused on mental health, but the larger homelessness population.
Follow on, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, go ahead.
If you look at some of the current literature, it seems to suggest that the actual number of homeless, and there's a definitional issue with homelessness, but the actual number of homelessness nationwide has been tracking down. In Johnson County, have we been going against that national trend, or are we tracking down? And in any example, there are peaks and valleys, so that's just a general question. And the two points that they, that most of the literature focuses on, one is mental health, but the other is poverty. That there are two edges, or two edges of the sword that can lead to homelessness, that in turn can feed mental health problems and poverty problems. So it's, it's a circular argument in how to break that cycle. So will you be offering some kind of report or breakout in terms of what you anticipate? I didn't see too much of it in the budget documents that I've seen so far, so I'm not trying to say it needs to be this year, but is that something that will be forthcoming in the next six months or so?
Yeah, absolutely. And again, I refer you back to the community meetings, that's the point of that, to put together a strategic plan, again, not just for county government, but for this community.
Okay. And what was the timeline on that?
Don't have one yet. I would anticipate, again, two meetings, in my opinion, making good progress, already talking about concrete steps to be taken. So I would say six months is a very realistic timeframe.
Very good. Thank you. I won't say 30 days like my colleague on the left would say.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Consent?
That's fine.
All right, so noted. Next item.
Item number three, resolution number WD-18-013. Conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funding for the design and bidding phase services for the Rock Creek, Martway, for the Rock Creek, Martway, and 75th and Knoll Pump Station Improvements Project, MT-M1-CO-74, in an amount not to exceed $1,142,200.
Ms. Pecari.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Susan Pecari with Wastewater. This request is for the design and bid phase funding for three of our oldest facilities in our system. They're in the northeastern portion of the county. Rock Creek is a pump station located just off of Rowe Boulevard and Johnson Drive. Martway and 75th Street, located at 75th Street and Knoll. Those are facilities that only operate during wet weather. The equipment at these facilities, several pieces of equipment at these facilities are at the end of their useful life. Some of the equipment actually dates back to the 1960s. These improvements are really needed to improve the reliability of these facilities, to help us keep the risk of sanitary sewer overflows and basement backups minimized. Once we've completed the design and we bid the project, we'll return to the board for construction phase funding.
Okay. Well, this does require a public hearing. We'll remain on action. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pecari, before next week, maybe we could visit offline on this a little bit?
Sure. Thank you.
All right, next item.
Item number four, resolution number WD-18-016. Conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funds for the construction phase of the Shawnee Mission-Turkey Creek Contract, 39B, Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Clarifier Equipment Repair Project, located at the Nelson Complex, in an amount not to exceed $1,037,800, and increasing the total project authorization amount to $1,710,324.
Ms. Pecari.
Good morning. Susan Pecari with Wastewater. Again, this request is for construction phase funding for repair and replacement of the clarifiers at our Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility. The Turkey Creek plant is actually part of a larger complex known as the Nelson Complex, located just off of Lamar, and I-35 is here in the northwestern portion of this map shown on your screen. The clarifiers are located inside these red boxes. Clarifier equipment is critical to our process. It removes the solids from the wastewater as part of the process. And so the mechanisms that we have there are at the end of their useful life, and we need to replace them. Last fall, on October 26, the board authorized funding for the purchase of the equipment that we need as part of this project. We did that to shorten the overall length of the project, because there's such a long lead time on that equipment. The construction portion of the project was bid on March 13, and award is the next agenda item, so they're companion items. This funding request includes the construction, engineering phase services, contingency and administration fees. It's part of the project. HDR was the firm that designed the project for us, and so they'll provide those construction phase services. This project was included in our financial plan that we presented to the board, most recently last May in 2017.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Okay.
Mr. Ashcraft.
No, Ms. Pecari and I can visit offline on this. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll remain on action. Next item.
Item number five, invitation for bid number 2018-005. Consider authorizing a contract with Walter Morgan Construction, Incorporated, to construct the Shawnee Mission-Turkey Creek Contract, 39B, Turkey Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility Clarifier Equipment Repair Project, located at the Nelson Complex, in an amount not to exceed $713,300.
Ms. Pecari.
And good morning again. Susan Pecari with Wastewater. So this is a companion item to the previous item. This is contract award to Walters Morgan. We advertised the project in Olatha News and posted it on the county's electronic bidding site, Ion Wave, as well as on Drexel Technologies Plan Room. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting that was held on February 28 to discuss the details of the project with the prospective bidders. We opened bids on March 13. We received seven bids. The low bidder was Walters Morgan. The design engineer reviewed the contractor's bid, as well as their qualifications, to complete the work, and they recommend awarding the contract to Walters Morgan. Wastewater staff agrees with that recommendation.
Question? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pecari, were there any new firms or unusual firms? I don't mean that in a pejorative sense, but firms that we, that usually have not done business with us are in this list of bidders?
As, as I look at this list, I, I am familiar with these firms. I will tell you, some of these firms haven't, haven't participated in our project bids for some time, so they're, it looks like they're interested in submitting bids again, so we've got, I think that's a good sign.
Thank you.
All right, well, this, yes, Ms. Klucka?
Just one quick, Susan, what was the engineer's estimate on this, on this project?
Well, the engineer, we didn't have the engineer do an estimate. They did a preliminary cost back last fall, much, very early in the design. So this would have been about 30% design, as long, as soon as they had gotten far enough so that we could then procure the equipment. At that time, they were estimating the cost was going to be about 1.4 million, so I think we're very happy with our bids. Obviously, the market's changed a lot since last fall, so, okay.
All right, well, this will remain on action. Next item.
Item number six, consider granting an exception to competition and authorizing a contract extension with Waste Management, Incorporated, for the disposal and removal of sludge, grit, and rags from the Johnson County wastewater facilities, in an amount not to exceed $1 million per year, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods.
Ms. Pecari.
Good morning again. Susan Pecari. This request, there's no funding as part of this request. This, or let me start over again here. As part of our normal process, so as part of the transport and treatment process in wastewater, we remove sludge, grit, rags from the wastewater, and those items must be properly disposed. Waste Management, which was formerly Deffanbah Industries, has been providing this disposal service for wastewater for several years. The current contract we have has been in place since 2013, and expires at the end of this month. In the past, we've issued invitations to bid for services of this type. Deffanbah in 2013 was the only bidder. They were also the only bidder in the previous two issues of similar contracts for disposal services. In order to garner some competition, we actually made several phone calls to several different landfills, and as it turns out, most of the landfills we could find in the area were not able to take our material. There's a limit to the amount of this kind of material they can receive in their landfill at any given time. The only one we could identify was over on the Missouri-Illinois state line, so it's about a 470-mile round trip, so it's not, we couldn't, they would not be cost competitive. Waste Management and talking, and purchasing staff and wastewater staff have been talking, engaging with Waste Management, and they have agreed to extend their contract and limit their annual price escalators to 4% for the next three years. So the request before you is to authorize an extension of the contract for one year, with the option to do two additional one-year renewals. Wastewater and TFM feel like this is a good approach to take, and so therefore, we're requesting approval of the exception to competition.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pecari, are the other wastewater entities in the region faced with the same lack of competition as we appear to be faced with?
Yes, sir. In fact, there is a group of municipalities that are dealing with this very same issue, and we are meeting quarterly to identify alternatives. Waste wa, wastewater ourselves, the board authorized a study, so we're looking at an alternative to refurbish the digesters that exist at Nelson, to provide at least a redundancy in the ability, in our ability for disposal of this type of material. So yes, we are, we're all very concerned and working on what's some alternatives.
Thank you. You anticipated my question. I was just hoping that the economies of scale, the power of having, having us all face this together, we may find some creative solutions, and it sounds like you're well aware.
Yeah. We're working on that. Yes, sir.
All right, well, we'll keep this one on action, Mr. Osterhaus.
I think if I ever form a blues band, it'll be sludge, grit, and rags.
I like that.
Name of the band. Susan, do you feel comfortable with that, with the pricing that we've got, even though it's an exception to competition?
Yeah, I, this is, this is a good price. I mean, with 4% escalators, that's very reasonable, considering, you know, some of the cost escalators you see in other types of services in our industry, so.
Thank you. All right, next item. Item seven.
Resolution number 021-18, an application number SW-PDP-FDP-3370-GA. Consider a request from Rose Design Build, Incorporated, applicant on behalf of JBS, Swift &amp; Company, Swift Beef, for an amendment to an approved preliminary and final development plan located at 461 Prairie Village Drive at New Century Air Center, to allow construction of buildings and use of property for a transloading facility on approximately seven acres, zoned PEC-3, planned to light Industrial Park District in Section 18, Township 14, Range 23.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, Planning Development Codes. This item was approved by the Southwest Zoning Board on March 28, 2018. It's an amendment to an existing preliminary and final development plan consolidating services. Staff has been working with Rose Design Build to bring this before you, an idea of the site plan. It does include reduction in the size of the original building. Originally, there were three buildings. Now, there are just two buildings, and a drive aisle on the south side of the property is included. We're also to be consistent with the New Century Air Center design guidelines, allowing corrugated metal in use in the exterior, which is approved on the original site plan in 2015. Staff is also recommending approval of that, that amendment as well.
Any questions? All right, so this is a zoning item, so it will remain on action. Next item.
Item number eight, RFP-2016-086. Consider authorizing a project expenditure in an amount not to exceed $293,830 for a countywide stormwater asset management plan, SAMP, utilizing the term and supply contract with CDM Smith, authorized by the board.
Okay, Mr. Kellenberger.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Kellenberger, Johnson County Stormwater Management Program. This is a request from the Stormwater Management Program to fund a countywide stormwater asset management plan. Historically, the Stormwater Management Program's primary focus has been on flooding, but under the direction of our new 2016 strategic plan, we are going to be expanding our scope to provide financial and technical assistance to Johnson County municipalities for stormwater system replacement, things like replacing failing metal pipes. The plan that will be developed as part of this scope is going to evaluate and compile all the existing stormwater asset data and inventory data that the cities have collected to date, and then it will develop a uniform scoring system and risk prioritization methodology. And finally, it's going to help us establish ongoing policies and procedures for this new element of our program. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Well, we did have some review of this in a study session, and so, any, any questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I think by your statement, by implication, this is a good step forward to a change strategically, very supportive of that. I would be interested in learning a little bit more about how CDM Smith was selected, and we can do that offline.
I can share with you now, or?
I'd like to hear, if I could, I'd like to hear that, if you would.
Absolutely. So we, the, as you recall, 2016, we had a, we went out for bid for our new term-of-supply RFP, it was mentioned here, 2016-068. We had 13 vendors submit for Stormwater Management Consulting Services, and out of those 13, there was a clear break between the top nine and the bottom four. We awarded term-of-supply contracts to those nine vendors. So as we move forward with implementation services of our strategic plan, and we have scope items like this that fall under General Stormwater Management Consulting Services, we'll reach out to those individuals for this type of work. So we reached out to all nine vendors in January. We had four firms respond to this, to this request for qualifications. So those four firms were, submitted proposals, a project approach, staff. We assembled a selection team of county staff. We relied on Johnson County Wastewater, since they've been doing this stuff, this kind of work for quite a while, and also some of our city reps that know their systems well. So we had a selection team evaluate those four proposals, and we arrived that CDM Smith is the most qualified to do this work for us.
And cost comparisons of before?
We did not go through that step. We have negotiated costs, hourly rates, under our term-of-supply contracts. So we negotiated a fee, and, not a fee, but we negotiated a scope of work, hours, and then we looked at their, their fee schedules that they previously submitted in our locked-in ads.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Action? Consent?
Consent. Action.
All right, so noted. We remain on action. Next item.
Item number nine, IFB-2018-020. Consider authorizing a contract with O'Donnell &amp; Sons Construction Company, Incorporated, for 19 miles of overlays at various locations in unincorporated Johnson County at a cost not to exceed $1,719,852.
Mr. Peddic, understand, there's some good news involved in these actions.
Yeah, good morning. Brian P. with Public Works. This is our contract for the overlays, which is a great preventative maintenance for our asphalt roads in the unincorporated area of the county, and we did have four bidders, and there's great prices right now, and you'll see a companion item following this. This, we're, we're requesting a couple more miles of overlay, but four bidders, great prices, and we've worked with this contractor before, so we're real happy with what this process.
And because of the low bid, we're able to do a couple more miles, right?
Yes.
All right, very good. Mr. Klucka?
Brian, I appreciate you having the engineer's estimate on there. I know that's been kind of a bug of mine here, because when we're taking in bids, I want to know what, what at least, whether it's done through confidential or a separate kind of a confidential bid submission from the engineer or whatever, but it at least gives me an idea of whether or not we're in the ballpark.
Right.
And it helps rationalize, to me, the bids and dollar amounts that come in offline, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, we are a little unique. We're required by state statute to provide that.
Great. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peddic, with oil prices going the wrong direction, what, what are you, what are you seeing in terms of these competitive bids? I'm not complaining, but it's just, it's a little confusing for a novice to understand this.
It is a little counterintuitive. We discussed this at our shop, and the, it's impossible to put it, put your finger on the exact reason, but the obvious one that we see is KDOT does not have a lot of work right now, and folks are hungry.
Okay. Fair point.
If there's a silver lining, question, question.
Yes, yes.
There's been a bit of a slowing.
They have their own asphalt.
It's pretty, it's pretty thin, but we do receive a benefit in this particular item.
Fair, fair point. Thank you.
All right. Okay, this will remain on action. Next item.
Item number 10, consider authorizing the county engineer to approve a change order with O'Donnell &amp; Sons Construction Company, Incorporated, for an overlay of 119th Street from Waverly Road to Moonlight Road in unincorporated Johnson County at a cost not to exceed $250,000.
Mr. Pedic.
Again, this is, we, with the savings that we're getting, here's a couple miles that we're very glad to be able to overlay this year. Overlaying at the correct time can save you a lot of money by doing it, again, at the appropriate time.
Okay, so this is a result of the savings on item number nine. Any questions?
Clarification? Brian, we're allowed to do change orders in, to what extent of the base price, without having to go out through some trigger point with the procurement process?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say it, and then I'm sure I'll get corrected if I do it wrong. A 10% or 100,000 is, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, this will remain on action. Next item.
Item number 11, consider authorizing a contract with Constellation New Energy Gas Division, LLC, for natural gas management service in an amount not to exceed $600,000. Their agreement will be for a one-year period with four additional one-year renewal options. Referenced State of Kansas Contract 40873.
Listen carefully to this presentation. Rob.
Well, good morning, Chairman Ilert and Commissioners. This is actually a really good news story, is, in that we are saving money for the county, and we consistently have since the inception of the program in 2008. So with that, I'll give you a little bit of a history on natural gas management services. The transportation of man, of gas from the refinery to the utility gateway was deregulated in 1985, allowing for competition for that portion. Once the gas hits the utility gateway, the utility then takes over and charges to the site. The two utilities that serve the county are Kansas Gas Service and Atmos. In 2008, with the increase of the gas prices, the county issued an invitation for bid and awarded a contract to One Oak Energy Marketing Company. In December... In December of 2011, One Oak sold to Constellation Energy Group, transferring the original agreement to the new company. The county is currently under a month-to-month contract with Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC utilizing the State of Kansas contract. Over the history of the contract with One Oak, now Constellation, the county has used the fixed-price model, a market plus fixed price, and the market price. All of these models will be available under the new contract as well. The current model being used is the market price due to the the cost of the commodity. The county currently nominates a percentage of the estimated gas consumption. Approximately 75% of our gas consumption is nominated, and that's being done at 16 sites currently. We have achieved over the the contract since 2008, on average, $100,000 a year by utilizing this service. In 2017, we saved from 20 to 30%, depending on the utility, for approximately $189,000. So we continue to save a little bit more. Currently, the market price model is being used, and what that is, is it uses the Inside FERC's Gas Market Report Price Index transported through the Southern Star Central Gas Pipeline for Texas, Oklahoma, and Kansas. And then the company that we use puts an adder on there, and that's how they make their money. Right now, that is at .27 cents per MM BTU, which is the unit of gas. In March of 2018, we requested quotes and opened them from Constellation New Energy Gas Division, Encore Energy Services, and Entherm. All of those firms have competitively solicited contracts that are available for the county to use that meet the purchasing requirement. Staff from TFM Facilities, Wastewater, and Synergistic reviewed the materials and determined the best value. Constellation New Energy Gas Division provided the most competitive cost model. They have an online reporting tool and energy management strategies available for use under the State of Kansas contract. We're actually seeing a reduction in the cost to us by four cents for MM BTU by going out through this informal process of gathering quotes off of using the cooperative contracts. And with that, I stand for questions.
Okay, yes, Ms. Clicker.
Could you explain to me again, Robin, there are three bases on the pricing. One is market. What is the other two?
We have utilized, there's a fixed-price model, which some people call that hedging or futures. There is a combination where you can take a certain percentage of your gas transport and fix it and use the rest on the market. That's called a market plus fixed, or you can just utilize the market price.
With that being, does, do you have the flexibility to move around within any of those three in this agreement?
We do. The county does.
And and that, to me, could be a daily or weekly, or depending what's happening in the market, gives you that flexibility to do that, correct?
Correct.
I'm all for those.
Other questions? Ms. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clicker, I'm with you. I think it's one of those facts that deregulation sometimes can be beneficial, and we can benefit from that, and I think your briefing sheet covers it, and your presentation covered it real well. The, the, whatever you call, the agenda listing here makes it seem like there's a cost here, but this is, this is really a good thing, so I, I would encourage staff to make sure not to miss those opportunities, because a lot of people don't get to the briefing sheets, they stop at the agendas, and the briefing sheet's a little bit different story, a better story, just a perspective.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Consent? Consent?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask the item before that. Is there a reason that that could not go on consent too? That was the change order?
Well, that's, that's in addition to the item on number nine, so if nine is not approved, then 10 will not be approved also.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm good with consent, as long as it's in the sixth district, which is okay with me.
All right, any other items?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes the items for agenda review. We are adjourned. We will reconvene into open session. We need to reauthorize the timing on our executive session.
I move, I'm sorry.
Let's start the executive session at 11:15 for 20 minutes.
Thank you. I move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at 11:15 AM for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of receiving the advice of counsel and to preserve attorney-client privilege and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 11:35 AM or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Second. Motion is made and seconded in regards to the executive session. Will the court please call a roll?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Eilert?
Aye. Motion approved, so we will move into our executive session, and at the conclusion, we will reconvene and open session.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.